Kids are not getting enough enrichment. They're not getting enough dance, music, sports, field trips that they need in order to grow. And I think this program is really supplementing that.
While the goal of this fourth annual cycle for LA's Best Event was an exercise for exercise sake, participants still got more cardiovascular workout than they bargained for.
After 30 minutes, I was like, "And I'm done."
All kidding aside, Vanessa Torres and the members of her Fast and Furious team raised a little over $6,000 for LA's Best by cycling for an hour.
Just emailing, talking to friends, being like, "Hey, instead of grabbing that cup of coffee, do you want to donate to my cause?" Just like every dollar went a long way.
With the hard work of fundraising and an hour of intense spinning behind them, many participants say they've still got more to give to LA's young kids.
I know they do several events throughout the year, so hopefully we can get involved with those and help out with the planning and, you know, and continue to meet everyone that's, you know, involved with the cause.
This year's final tally of $70,000 beat last year's Cycle for LA's Best Event, which raised $64,000. And actually, this year, LA's Best celebrates its 25th anniversary. To mark this milestone, mayors of LA's past met up at City Hall to pay tribute to the program, which was set in motion by a fellow LA mayor.
He was concerned about them having something to do when they got out of school, to have a safe place where they could go and study and learn and be encouraged and be told that, yes, you can. Tom Bradley made that happen.
25 years ago this month, former LA mayor Tom Bradley proposed what would later become LA's Best, the city's after-school enrichment program.
He wanted the children of Los Angeles to have safe supervised places to go after school, where they could gain an enriching experience and find wonderful role models to look up to.
What started first at only 10 schools is today, a program serving 28,000 students at 189 school locations in the city. In total, the program has touched the lives of 350,000 children over the past quarter century. That includes this eloquent little boy who spoke in city council chambers about less fortunate kids who fall through the cracks.
When someone dies, I can see the sadness in the family. I can see they want to cry an ocean in the room, but the family keeps the tears back. That is why I am glad to have a program that keeps me away from violence.
A tough act to follow, but Mayor Richard Reardon, who succeeded Mayor Bradley as LA's mayor, also took to the podium to talk about the important role LA's Best plays.
And I believe every child has a right to a quality education, whether richer, poor, whatever their color is, they have that right.
Former LA mayor James Hahn and Mayor Antonio Viegosa's deputy mayor for education all paid tribute to Mayor Bradley and LA's Best on this special anniversary, as did this LA's Best alum who went on to graduate from Harvard University. A succession of supporters and beneficiaries bearing witness for a program committed to giving its best to LA's best and brightest for another 25 years. And LA's Best gets another mention this month, as mayors from all 50 states set aside a special day in April to honor outstanding community volunteers and the groups they volunteer for. Gil Reyes reports from City Hall.
LA Mayor Antonio Viegosa hands out awards to several groups of young adults, each giving freely of their time to help kids in underserved areas.
Where they, you know, will read with children, they'll do games and poems and sing songs, and do a lot of really fantastic learning activities to help the children build their language and literacy skills.
Twin Tran from the group Jump Start recruits many of her college-age volunteers from USC, UCLA, and other universities. Groups like them and City Year receive honors on this first-ever Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service.
Those in our national service field who are out there every day in the trenches making a difference with our youth.
Free after-school programs like LA's Best are made possible by volunteers. Mayor Antonio Viegosa credits them for helping to improve student performance in LA schools overall during his tenure, but more is needed on campus and in surrounding neighborhoods.
It's not about me. It's about us. And it's not about what I and the city can do, it's about what we can do for each other.
The mayor has also hosted and promoted over 30 community cleanup days since he took office eight years ago. The next big one is set for Saturday, May 18th, at El Sarino Middle School, and of course, you're invited to attend. Outside City Hall, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The upcoming Harvey Milk Day of Service will be the last in the mayor's eight-year term. Other volunteer groups honored by the city this month included 826LA, Playworks, Reading Partners, and the UCLA Bruins Corps. Area residents and frequent walkers know that the road around Lake Hollywood had been closed for years, but the LEDWP and council member Tom Labonge are celebrating its grand reopening. Anna Marcos joins residents for a morning stroll.
Nothing like a hike along the lake with friends, especially when that lake is the Lake Hollywood reservoir, and the hike has been closed to the public for close to eight years. Councilmember Tom Labonge led the residents in the reopening of the perimeter road around the lake, but Labonge has even bigger plans for the area.
It's very important to get out and walk, but now with this reopening, and some of this is natural lands that the DDP owns, ought to get trails marked appropriately on that so we can connect to the trails of Griffith Park.
The road was shut down in 2005 after a record 35 inches of rainfall created landslides and left a trail of destruction. The eastern side of the lake reopened in 2009, but the west side had remained closed until now.
Basically, the road was wiped out. If you saw pictures following the landslides, and there was just, it looked like a torrent of muddy water dropping off into waterfall.
The area suffered nine major landslides, this one being the largest. It went all the way down to Lake Hollywood. You can see some of the work being done to shore up the land, but a lot of it is underground.
Equipment was actually larger than the houses in some cases to rebuild this.
Folks of all sizes were out enjoying the day, the fresh air, and the views.
And I'm so excited to have my daughter exposed to one of the most special parts of Los Angeles, and I can't wait to take her walking and do a good three-mile loop with her.
It's really nice. They're dear up here. It's just a very peaceful spot.
I'm ecstatic, and so is the neighborhood. We're very, very happy.
The total cost to repair this area of million-dollar views, close to $10 million. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Repairs were done, thanks in part to help from US Senator Dianne Feinstein's office and the Natural Resource Conservation Service. As high school students get set for all kinds of celebrations, police are also reminding them not to drink and drive or text-call-and-drive. Gil Reyes reports from the LAPD Sober Graduation Program.
Wearing goggles to blur their vision, students at Granada Hills Charter High School receive a crash course on the dangers of impaired driving, and through computer simulation... This lesson also covers the risks of texting while driving.
As I was trying to text and as I was trying to make a phone call, it was interesting to see that I started swerving. I didn't know where my speed was at. I wasn't checking my mirrors correctly.
It's all part of the LAPD's Sober Graduation Program. Since 1985, officers have visited high schools to remind students getting set for prom and graduation not to drink and drive while celebrating. Corey Reed learned the hard way in a crash that left him blind. His drunken friend was behind the wheel.
He ended up doing a year in jail. I had to go through the legal process of that, watching a best friend go through that and trying to support him, but also having my own emotions to deal with in going blind and losing a leg.
In 2011, the LAPD says over 9,800 people nationwide died in DUI-related crashes. Over 350,000 people injured.
I have a 17-year-old daughter, and I have an agreement with her when she got her car that she can call me anytime, 24 hours a day, and I will pick her up and her friends anywhere, no questions asked, no penalty, no punishment at all, and never have the conversation again. So she knows and her friends know that they can call me anytime. I ask all parents to do the same.
It is a responsibility of each and every one of us to move forward and pass the message that drinking underage is not allowed. Drinking and driving is never allowed.
These recent photos taken in the valley are sobering reminders of what could happen to you or someone you love. In Granada Hills, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The LAPD plans to spread the message to over 50 high schools throughout Los Angeles. Remembering educator and activist Sal Castro, the city steps up security at its airports in the wake of the Boston bombings and their aftermath, and information you need to know to vote in the May 21 election. These stories and more in City Beat. Sal Castro, a Mexican-American educator and activist, died on April 15th at the age of 79. Castro was most known for guiding student walkouts at five predominantly Mexican-American schools on the east side back in 1968. During this time, students demanded a culturally relevant curriculum, new schools, and an end to corporal punishment, among other demands. In a written statement released by the mayor's office, Mayor Antonio Viegosa said Castro will always be remembered for his commitment to improving educational opportunities for everyone, regardless of race. Out of an abundance of caution, airport police increased its presence at LAX, LA-Ontario International, and Van Nuys airports last week in response to the explosions in Boston near the finish line of the Boston Marathon. They are also encouraging the traveling public to remain vigilant.
Notify the authorities if you think there's something suspicious. You'd rather be safe than sorry.
Los Angeles World Airport says police deployed bomb-detection canines, additional patrol officers, and security personnel. Councilmember Tom Labonge declared Friday, April 12th, the 12th Annual Jackie Robinson Day in the city of Los Angeles. The declaration made in council chambers happened to coincide with the release of the movie 42 about Robinson's life and baseball career.
Uncle Jackie, one thing that I got out of the movie, as far as, I noticed a lot about family, and I drew on that, and I recognized it along with our own family. It brought a lot of family back together.
The UCLA star is legendary not only for his stellar career with the Brooklyn Dodgers before breaking Major League Baseball's color barrier in 1947.
He brought millions of us together in a new friendship and understanding.
After his baseball career, Robinson's tireless efforts to eradicate racial injustice earned him the Presidential Medal of Freedom. The LA City Clerk's office is reminding those who want to vote by mail in the May 21st general municipal and special elections that the first day to apply for a vote-by-mail ballot is Monday, April 22nd, and receive to know later than Tuesday, May 14th at 5:00 PM. Applications for a vote-by-mail ballot can be found on the back cover of the official sample ballot and voter information pamphlet, which is mailed to all registered voters. Applications are also available on the Election Division website in English and various other languages. The city clerk's website is cityclerk@lacity.org. Hollywood rolled out the red carpet to honor some of the top student filmmakers in Los Angeles. Yana Kay takes us to the Student Media Film Festival.
In this post-apocalyptic world, a group of teenagers try to survive.
One dude saw me see fish.
The story unfolds in a film called Survival of the Fittest, a nine-minute movie made by Santa Monica High School student Milo Poon Fear, who was intrigued by the subject.
All the hype about 2012 and the end of the world, and so I just capitalized on that, and I thought about who would survive and why they would survive.
My name is Debbie. I'm 16 years old, and I have, among other things, a can opener.
Survival of the Fittest was among 36 films that were screened at the third annual LA Student Media Festival, held at the El Portal Theater in the North Hollywood Arts District. The finalists in five different categories posed for pictures on the red carpet prior to the award ceremony announcing the winners.
Hearing I became a finalist was like winning in itself, just hearing that I can get my film screened in front of an audience, that I'm in the comedy category, that I'm one of six films in the comedy category was so amazing, so surreal, and the fact that I'm here right now is just so much fun. I'm just so happy.
The annual festival was founded by Los Angeles City Councilmember Paul Krikorian. It recognizes student filmmakers from a variety of schools in Southern California, from Beverly Hills to Glendale.
It gives them the opportunity to really express themselves and to find their voice through the medium of film.
Out of nearly 200 submissions, Poon Fear's Survival of the Fittest won in the Best Comedy category, a story about the end of the world that may just be the beginning of a bright future behind the camera. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
Winning students also received an official commemoration from the city of Los Angeles for their work. For more information on the Los Angeles Student Media Festival, visit lasmf.lacity.org. LAX introduces a new volunteer program to help ensure passengers have a stress-free experience while traveling. Rasha Goel explains.
Meet the new breed of furry airport volunteers. These dogs and their owners are part of the Los Angeles International Airport's Pets Unstressing Passengers Program, also known as PUP.
These pups, I think, are going to be amazingly effective at relieving stress and anxiety and exceptionally helpful in calming nerves and creating a more friendly atmosphere and travel experience for the passengers.
Traveling can be stressful sometimes, or people might be traveling for, you know, not-so-pleasant reasons, so having a dog and a volunteer coming up and talking to you and being able to hug and pet the dog, it's priceless.
This is the first time ever Therapy Dogs are at LAX. LAX has partnered with Therapy Dogs Incorporated, an organization that works with members who are involved in volunteer animal-assisted activities. In addition to training with the organization, each volunteer then trains at LAX.
The training at LAX includes a four-hour classroom where they are learning how to handle situations at the airport, they're learning where the airlines are, they help with wayfinding and directions, and assist passengers in need.
This is Finn, who is one of the dogs part of the PUP program. Now, he and his furry friends will be here at LAX seven days a week, working in two-hour shifts with their handlers, and you can find them in the boarding areas.
We've been having a great time so far, whether it's passengers, and he's just the right height for kids, so kids can run up and say hi to him, but also the security guards and TSA, it de-stresses them as well.
We have two at home, and it reminded me of, I'm gonna go back and see our dog, so it was great. Made me smile.
Passengers can also learn more fun facts about these furry friends through trading cards, giving passengers at LAX a pup-tastic experience. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Airport officials say the PUP program is open for more volunteers. If you are interested, you can check out the website at lawa.org/vip. And in this week's list of things to do, a chorus of 1,000 students performs, appreciating ballet from a design perspective and getting your hands dirty for a local arts center. The Los Angeles Master Corral presents a free annual concert at Walt Disney Concert Hall as part of its 24th annual Los Angeles Master Corral High School Choir Festival. It takes place on Friday, April 26th at 1:00 PM. The concert features a choir made up of 1,000 students from 25 Southland High Schools. The Walt Disney Concert Hall is located at 111 South Grand Avenue. For information, go to lamc.org/hscf. There is no arguing ballet is art, but the Dance and Design Event on Saturday, April 27th at Gensler Downtown looks at dance from a design standpoint. The event features the artistic director from American Contemporary Ballet, who will speak on that very subject. His talk will also be highlighted by premieres of short dance works with ACB principal dancers and musicians. The performances are at 2:00, 7:00, and 9:00 PM, and after every performance, the audience will be able to join the artists on the dance floor for drinks and live jazz. Gensler Downtown is located at 500 South Figueroa Street. Go to americancontemporaryballet.org for ticket prices and parking fee information. And while weekends are usually for doing work around the house, maybe you can spare a few hours on Saturday, April 27th to help transform a section of Beyond Baroque's front lawn into an ocean-friendly garden. Founded in 1968, Beyond Baroque is one of the country's leading independent literary arts centers and public spaces. The garden project, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, includes planting native plants, building infiltration basins, and applying mulch. You're asked to bring your own gardening equipment. Refreshments will be served. Beyond Baroque is located at 681 Venice Boulevard in Venice. Go to beyondbaroque.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. During this year's Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, the city is celebrating the diverse community with a poster contest for students. Saieda Pagan shows us what the kids came up with.
These poster contest winners were all smiles as they posed for pictures with LA Mayor Antonio Viegosa. Their artwork was on display at El Pueblo de los Angeles Historical Monument. The contest was in advance of Asian and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month. Children from all ethnic backgrounds and all ages created the posters to the delight of everyone.
The best way to celebrate our diversity, the fact that we come from so many places, is to learn about our history, to learn about the history of, in this case, people who come from Asia or from Pacific Islands, to learn about their culture, to learn about their leaders, to learn about the contributions they've made to America.
The theme this year was to dream, and 10th grader Joshua Kim dreams of peace among Asian nations.
No matter how different you are, you guys should all be together. You guys are all the same thing inside and out.
Jocelyn Marzon won the top prize, the Best in Show. Her poster depicts unity in the Philippines and has a message that resonates here at home.
Like in school, I always help everybody, you know, keep them company whether they need it or not. I'm always there, and like, it's just helping out. It's not a problem.
This poster competition is one of several that are held each year to help celebrate the city's diversity. This poster competition was sponsored by the city of LA and Wells Fargo Bank.
It's amazing, you know, to be American, Asian, myself. It's just a sense of pride, curiosity in other cultures, and just open to embrace all of it, because they're all great.
The first-place winner got a $300 grant, and in addition, Wells Fargo will be issuing free postcards depicting some of this fine artwork. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Saieda Pagan for LA this week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
การออกเสียงลงคะแนนของคืนวันเลิกตั้งเพียงกรอกข้อความบนบัตรลงคะแนนของท่าน
I'm Jeff, this is JD from Sun Valley. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. That awesome?
Sergeant, if we could please call the members and give me an ETA of their arrival.
Good morning. It is Friday, April 26. I want to welcome everyone to their Los Angeles Council chambers. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We do not have a quorum as of yet because we have a committee that has yet to adjourn. So what we're going to try to do now is begin the presentation portion of today's agenda. And we will start off with Ms. Perry.
Okay, so everybody come up here. Stand next to me. Come on. Tall guy's in the back.
Tall guy's in the back, always the case.
I know, I'm sorry.
Perry, front.
You can come in over here, stand.
Please stay.
And you can bring your mom up. Next to me, mom? And then you can put Mary next to you.
Jan wants you up here.
Stand next to me, and then you can put Mary next to you.
Mary, woman Mary.
Yeah, yeah. We can all turn sideways. Thank you very much, Mr. President. And today, I'm very pleased to welcome Shelley and Ray Cappy and their daughter Karen Cappy, Bill Simonian and Vicky Simonian, Dean Nota, Mary Norris, and of course, Tom Gilmore. That's right. Ray Cappy is the founding director of the Southern California Institute of Architecture. And they're here in honor of Sciarc's 40th anniversary. Founded in October of 1972 with only 75 students, Sciarc has continued to develop and today boasts an alumni network of over 4,000 students who are heading programs practicing, working, writing, and teaching all over the world. Under the direction of Ray Cappy, Sciarc continues to deliver excellence in teaching and strong programs recognized on both the national and international stage. Now, as many of you know, Ray Cappy is an internationally recognized architect, having held chairmanships in the Los Angeles California Council and National American Institute of Architects, and was made a Fellow of the AIA, the highest honor of the Institute for Design. Shelley and Ray Cappy successfully founded the Cal Poly Pomona Architecture Program three and one-half years prior to establishing Sciarc. And their combined reputations instantly gave the program credibility, professional support, and it immediately began to grow and to thrive. The Cappys skillfully led the Cal Poly Pomona Architecture Program for 15 years and developed pedagogical experience and financial expertise, as well as interpersonal skills that provided the necessary foundation to establish Sciarc. With Ray directing, as well as teaching design and special seminars, and Shelley teaching architectural history, coordinating the design forum, public lectures, the night school classes, the architecture gallery, developing the library, and doing public relations, Sciarc achieved national and international recognition. In just four years, four years with an energized student body of 200, it obtained national professional accreditation in 1976. Sciarc was able to acquire and restore a 200-year-old Italian villa in the hills overlooking Lake Lugano in Vico Morcotte, Switzerland, for Sciarc's European Studies Program started in 1978, which has provided approximately 1,000 Sciarc students the opportunity to live and study in the villa and travel to see the art, architecture, and cities of Europe. And in 2012, Sciarc was ranked internationally as the number-one architecture school, always a goal of Ray's, 40 years in the making. Sciarc's new headquarters is the iconic reinforced concrete Santa Fe Railway freight building located in the eastern side of downtown Los Angeles. It represents the adaptive reuse of one of the most important early downtown Los Angeles buildings. And so I ask you to join me in celebrating, commending, and congratulating Ray Cappy and one of the other founders, Bill Simonian, and Shelley Cappy, and all of the individuals who are here today in celebrating 40 years of accomplishments and contributions to the city of Los Angeles and beyond.
Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry, I have a few members on the queue. Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Mr. President, good morning. First, I want to congratulate Sciarc for having an undefeated football team. Never lost a game, very proud of that. But also, I'm more proud of Mike Rotundy, who was our quarterback at John Marshall High, who was one of your founders, an architect. And I see Michael, he would sketch, as an architect usually does, in a little book on Hyperion Avenue. And Michael's done so many good things, and to know others have done great things, and to know that the dominance, and Ms. Perry has been a lot of credit to this, of Sciarc in the heart of the city at the old Santa Fe warehouse there. Because there was a hiring hall across the street for Santa Fe, and I was there in 1973. And I remember that location well. But to see what you've done to transform it and what's going to happen to transform it. Architecture is one of the most important aspects as we look at this building with John Parkinson, Albert C. Martin, and others. And this design was a statement for what this city could be. And Parkinson, who's going to be honored in the near future, I just learned this yesterday, Mr. President. When we designed the Coliseum and the historic Parasile, which is such a statement, that architect's thought wasn't good enough for the Olympics until he designed it well enough that we got the games in '32, which was so key to the architecture. Architecture is the invitation to the heart and soul of a place, of a building. And Sciarc took that up in such a way, and really is probably the reason why architecture is revered so much right now. Other schools never had the banner. They may have the great football teams and basketball teams and track teams. But Sciarc always had the thought in the new way of thinking. So I'm so pleased. And Jamie Bennett, you're... Is he the head dean, if that's correct?
COO.
COO, which is the person there. But all of you who put it together and the students who come from there will have their handprints, those young men and women, on many things, not just in Los Angeles but around the world. So, Ms. Perry, what a wonderful day to have Sciarc Day in the city of Los Angeles. And congratulations to everyone involved, including Coach Gilmore in the back.
Mr. Reyes, Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Congressman. I just wanted to rise and also give my thanks. I've been caring planning and land use for about 12 years now. And in that process, we see some tremendous designs, layouts of structures. The creativity that comes from Sciarc has been unbelievable. What impressed me the most has been not only your location near the River Corridor, but the potential and the anchor that you have established there as this great institution. And when we look at the challenges of traversing that railroad so that we can connect to that riverway, looking at how the bridges can be multifunctional, bike paths, pedestrian ways, greenways, buffer zones, those types of elements that can not only celebrate the history of this great city, but speak to Los Angeles for the next 50 to 100 years. And it's that type of energy that comes from this great school. So I want to thank you for that. Not only because as pressures grow, as our population grows, as we continue to be that international city, you have a wonderful laboratory when you have so many different languages, so many different cultures converging here as that international economy continues to grow. So how you define space, how you articulate designs, how we become less barbaric and how we treat our water, how we can contain it, filter through designs that come from your great school, is what's going to make this city so great. So you are the stewards. You've been the foundation. And it's a beautiful future because of your heart and soul and passion for improving our environment. So I thank you for that. And I really have a sense of honor to be able to address you this way. And hopefully, the students that are listening can be inspired by your energy. So thank you so much. Thank you, Congressman Perry, for bringing them forward. It is about time we celebrate the beauty of our great city. And it starts with our engineers, our architects, and those who will invest in our great city. So congratulations.
Ms. Perry, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I think it's worth noting that Shelley and Ray's son Finn, who's also an architect, has done the design for the redo of a senior center on Avalon in South Los Angeles. And the design is currently being implemented in the seniors at 76 in Avalon. We'll have a new senior center designed by another Sciarc graduate, and it will be an extraordinary experience for them. And so with that, I'd like to ask Ray Cappy if he would just say a few words on behalf of all of those who are assembled here with us today.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you, Councilman Labange, Councilman Reyes, all the members of the city council. You've all said it all. That's very nice of you. I also want to thank the city because in 19... or, well, 1999, really, 2000, when we came down here, the city was kind enough to give us some financial help to get into this site that is so important, I think, in LA and has, I think, contributed quite a bit to the city, both in real estate value. I think our value went up six times since 2000. And I'm sure that that's probably true of many of the areas around where we are. And I think we're happy to be part of the artist community down there. I think some more development has taken place. I hope we've contributed back. And I'm particularly proud... And I'm particularly proud of the fact that there's a large development on the east side of Santa Fe now, between Third and Fourth, and I think we were, that wouldn't have been there, I don't think, if Sciarc was, wasn't downtown. So we've contributed in that way, but I think what I would like to see is that the city and the council actually use the talent of the faculty and the students for helping with some of your urban design and planning issues. And I think it's a contribution that we can make beyond the economic contribution. So it's been a great time, 40 years, 40 years of Sciarc, 60 years of my own practice, which both are happening today, this year. And I also want to, once again, many of the members standing behind me were mentioned, but they were very important in the development. Bill Simonian was with us out at Cal Poly, and along with a half a dozen other members there, we started Sciarc. Dean Noda, who's behind me, also was a founding student, along with Michael Rotundi, who was the second director and also a founding student. We have two members of the Board of Trustees, Mary Norris, who I think you all know, and Tom Gilmore, and I'm happy to have them here. And, other than that, it's all family members. So, thank you again. I'm very honored, and I appreciate it very much.
Again, congratulations.
So we'll all go in the back together and take a picture. So we'll follow, we'll go out that way and get your purses and everything that you brought with you. Okay. This one, yes. Thank you. Lovely to be here.
We do, Mr. Clerk, have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Hello, Congressman Busquets, Englander, Garcetti, Weisler, Coetz, Kokory, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Labange moves, Kokory in seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Garcetti moves, Coetz, seconds.
Mr. President, before getting into today's agenda, there's a request from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file Item 1A inasmuch as the lien has been paid in full, and to continue Item 1B to May 28.
Without objection.
Further, there are requests from members to continue Item 2 to May 10, and Item 5 to May 1.
Without objection.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, Items 3 and 4 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials? Seeing none. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next section, Mr. Clerk.
Items 5 through 14 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have any cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on Items 6, 7, 8, 10, 13, and 14.
Okay, let's hold those on the desk. And, members, any specials? Seeing none. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And where does that bring us on the agenda?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations.
Okay, Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, I just want to introduce you, a very special Californian, a graduate of Stanford University, a Truman Scholar, a very special person, he's the youngest councilman in California, from Stockton, California. Please welcome Councilmember Michael Tubbs. Good job, good job. Good to see you. Say just a quick word.
Welcome.
Mr. President, councilmembers, thank you so much. It's an honor to be here in L.A. I actually got my start in politics at USC, at the California Youth Think Tank, where I learned about debating advocacy. So L.A. has a really special place in my heart. I'm also here with the California Endowment on their Boys and Men of Color Conference and Committee, so I would encourage all councilmembers to really get involved with that committee, because they're doing really important work for the most vulnerable population we have in L.A. and Stockton and the state, our boys and men of color who need jobs, need education, and need skills. So thank you so much for the work you all are doing, and thank you for the kind introduction, and I love L.A., so thanks for having me.
Thank you for, thank you for visiting with us today.
Please welcome the President's City Council, Mr. Herb Wesson, with our very special weekly presentation with our Animal Services Department.
I'm going to ask the camera, even though I enjoy television time, if you take it off me and put it on Bruno. Oh, look at Bruno. Bruno is an American-Stanford mix, and he's about four years old. The Highway Patrol found him wandering on the 110 freeway, and I'm very appreciative to them that they would bring him to us. I have received several complaints that I might be biased towards small dogs. So I want to put that to rest and present to you for adoption Bruno. Bruno is an American-Stanford mix. They call him Bruno. He's been very good at the shelter.
He loves belly rubs and back scratches and loves to cuddle.
He loves belly, I'm informed, he loves belly, belly rubs, back scratches, and loves to cuddle.
Yes. He thinks he's a lapdog.
He thinks he's a lapdog. So we're trying to find him a home.
And I think he's housebroken.
And we believe that he's housebroken.
He'll fit perfect on the bed.
No, I'm not going to say that. She wanted me to say, "He'll fit perfect on the bed." No, I, I know he's too doggone big to sleep with me. But anyway, we've been doing this pet adoption program for about seven years. Where it relates to our dogs, we have a 100% adoption rate, and so I'd like to keep that streak alive, take it off me and on Bruno. Yeah, that's where it is. Folks, that's me speaking, it's not really Bruno. Bruno is looking for a home. If you want unconditional love, he's a canineette, we'll give it to you. Again, we want to keep our 100% adoption rate intact, so please call 888-452-7381.
And he doesn't seem to pay attention to dogs.
And he really doesn't, she said that she hasn't heard him bark, so he's not a barker, for several days. He's unfazed by dogs and cats. It just appears to be a happy-go-lucky big guy. So again, if you're interested in Bruno, 888-452-7381. His ID number, if you need to call, is 813-77335. Now, I'm going to ask our wonderful volunteer to stay in the back of chambers for a while, and if anybody wants to come and introduce themselves to Bruno, trust me, he is looking for a home. So anyway, Mr. President, I thank you for the time you have afforded me on this day, and please, let's find him a home.
Mr. President, before you leave right there, and Arlene, who's our specialist with Animal Services, see if Bruno could testify right there. We moved the chairs, see if he could just testify. He'll get a great shot. Everybody will see it. See if Bruno, just, oh, Bruno, you're it, Bruno. Good job. All right, Bruno, get that shot. Good job.
He's a sweetheart, Mr. President.
The headlines, L.A. Times tomorrow, City Council Gone to the Dogs. Thank you, Mr. President, a big hand, and, Arlene, a big hand for you, Madam Volunteer. Thank you. Get a two-shot.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Here we are.
The floor is yours, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. President, we have council presentation to neighborhood councils for National Volunteer Week. President?
Give our neighborhood councils a round of applause. They work hard, they work hard for free. They're a great asset to the council members.
If we can have the representatives come down, and Dracy, you, and Tori, and Len Schaefer, and Yolanda, and who else do we have here? Come on down. Commissioner? Commissioner's not listed here, should be listed here. Good morning, good morning, good morning. Here we go. Len's leaving his cowboy hat there. Good morning, Commissioner. Len? Good morning. So we have National Volunteer Week, an opportunity to shine light on the many Angelenos who were tirelessly to improve the quality of life in our communities of the great city of the Angels. There are now 95 neighborhood councils in the city of Los Angeles, led by over 1,700 board members, and their charter mandate is to engage the communities and to monitor the delivery of city services. Last year, 55 neighborhood councils celebrated their 10th anniversaries, and this 22 neighborhood councils joined them in celebrating a decade of civic engagement. I fought for the establishment of neighborhood councils when I was part of the city's elected charter commission, seems like centuries ago, because I believe that citizens should be able to make contributions to the civic life in their communities. I regularly interact with the neighborhood councils in my district and tell you that this city is strengthened by the efforts of these great citizens of our vast communities of Los Angeles. I'm proud and excited to acknowledge the extraordinary work of these communities and civic leaders today for their great work in the many communities of the city of Los Angeles. In recognition of this decade of engagement, the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners initiated the first annual Empowerment L.A. Awards to honor neighborhood councils that best fulfill their mission to engage the communities and monitor the delivery of city services, and this was brought to me by none other than Len Schaefer, a former member of the prosecution of the district attorney's office, who's now retired and very active in the community. The Board of Neighborhood Commissioners also volunteers, and they are volunteers like the neighborhood council elected folks, committed for their work. Commission President Paul Park, where's Paul? Paul? Paul's not here. He's at a conference. And Vice President Len Schaefer, come forward. Len, make sure everybody knows who you are, Len Schaefer. Commissioners Linda, Linda Lux? Wish she not here, I've got all these names. How about Karen Mack? Karen's here. Daniel, Daniel Garcia? Gattika? How about Douglas Epperhart? Douglas, come on up. Thank you. So the Empowerment L.A. Awards go to seven neighborhood councils that are the following: North Hills East, Silver Lake Park, Mesa Heights, Mar Vista, Sherman Oaks, Mid City, and Harbor Gateway North. Are those folks here? Come on down.
Mid City.
Come on down. Get on camera, everybody. Come on down. It's time to come up here. The first one is Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council. Won for the Neighborhood Services Committee Pothole Lottery, a campaign to identify the worst potholes in the alleyways in Sherman Oaks and get them repaired. Stakeholder remarked, "I've waited 54 years for the dangerous potholes in front of my house to be fixed," and the Director of Street Services, Nazario Sosa, explained, "This is a model for what neighborhood councils' participation should be. During the research and taking action, Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council." There you go. Congratulations. You have a couple of words to say?
Just a moment. Thank you very much for this award, and I accept this on behalf of the full neighborhood council. Everybody on the council works very hard to improve life in the neighborhoods and to work very closely with the city council, and we appreciate this award, and it shows what citizens can do when they get together and work together to improve life in the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next recipient, Mid City Neighborhood Council. Let's hear it for Mid City Neighborhood Council. Is that you, Mr. Wesson?
Yes, it is. I'm very proud of him.
Mr. Wesson, backyard, there you go. Honored for their work on the Washington Boulevard Improvement Project that has kept them busy since 2005, improving safety, beauty, economic development along the corridor. Gang activity went down, crime rate went down by over 50% in the first two years. Graffiti tagging dropped from 198 times a week to less than 10 times per week. The CRA and CD-10 impressed with their results, helped the group gather funding for their goal of a medium island, which was completed this summer with community input on design and placement. Mid City Neighborhood Council. You want to speak?
On behalf of Mid City Neighborhood Council, it is my honor to accept this award. We want to take a picture with the president.
You want to say something? Don't be shy.
She's not shy, Zine, trust me. Betty is not shy.
I just want to say we want to take a picture, Mid City would like to take a picture with the president.
And the president wants to take a picture with you.
We'll get the president, we'll get the president down off his pedestal. Go ahead, somebody else. Go ahead, sir.
And I want to thank Herb for all his help with Mid City when I was president there. Thank you.
Alan.
There you go. Accolades to Herb Wesson, Council President.
Alan, you let your hair grow.
Thank you, Herb Wesson. Our next recipient is Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council. Harbor Gateway, for their organizing the community and turning out large numbers of residents to protest the development of land under the freeway, a project that they contend would result in environmental and health issues for the residents. They stayed on it for years and prevailed, convincing the planning commission to oppose the zone change. Let's hear it for Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council. Microphone is yours.
Thank you, it's an honor, and it's an all-encompassing award for our work in our neighborhood. We have the unity of diversity there that is continuing, and we appreciate this award so much, and we'd like to thank Councilman Busquets' staff, who are marvelous in helping us to continue to be the best that we can be. Thank you.
Anyone else from Harbor Gateway wish to speak? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Rosalie, Rosalie, you've been nominated.
We just want to thank the residents of the area who helped to organize themselves to fight this development issue. The developer was going to create 24 small town homes under the 91 freeway overpass, and as a result of our coming to the City Planning Commission, the City Planning Commission has now instituted some policies that would help prevent such proposals in the future. So it's a protection for all of the neighborhoods of the city.
And I also would like to thank Mr. Busquets and his council. They did a wonderful job. That was my area, District 1, and it meant a whole lot to us, because there were going to be 24 houses in there, in an area that you wouldn't believe how small it was. We have to do something about Caltrans giving away these properties, and it's very important that you stay on top of it, and we bless you guys for taking the time to just honor our neighborhood council. Thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations to Harbor Gateway. Now, how about the next recipient, Mar Vista Community Council. Mar Vista, Mr. Rosendahl.
Right here. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Okay, the Mar Vista Community Council's Green Committee brought home an award for their annual Green Garden Showcase that engages the community in the sustainability lifestyle by putting the spotlight on drought-tolerant and food-producing gardens with a popular tour that connects. tour that connects people with the council. Mar Vista Community Council.
Thank you so much. Thanks to Paul Coretts and Bill Rosendahl, our council members who give us terrific support in publicizing, promoting our tour. And our goal is to get every single garden in Mar Vista from the single family homes to the commercial, to the multi-residential, sustainable. Thank you.
Anybody else? Don't be shy. Don't be shy, go ahead.
Again, thank you Bill for believing us and supporting us for all these years and really nurturing our council. Thank you very much.
For my chickens and turkeys. Love it.
Thanks again.
I also want to thank our very, very supportive council members and I want to invite everyone here to visit us Sunday at our wonderful Mar Vista Farmer's Market. The Green Committee is there every week with our green tent and an echo guest and we're right next door to our MVCC booth at the Farmer's Market where people from the community can come and talk to us and address their concerns.
Very good, thank you. Congratulations. And now we have the North Hills East Neighborhood Council honored for their commitment to bilingual civic engagement and for their ambitious outreach strategies that include professional translation services, completed with social media in English and Spanish to engage their community and to form partnerships with schools, parent centers, nonprofit organizations and law enforcement. North Hills East Neighborhood Council.
Thank you everyone. I am very proud and happy to accept this award on behalf of the hardworking neighborhood council members of North Hills East as well as the not-for-profit organizations, our hardworking communities and volunteers who helped to make this possible. Outreach is all about reaching your target and that means including everyone and through a variety of ways and that is what North Hills East has done by hitting the ground running, meeting school principals, getting in touch with not-for-profits, working with parents, apartment building managers, our beautification committee, hitting the streets, cleaning the streets. That's what it's all about and we are a new neighborhood council so we want to thank the Department of LA Empowerment for all of the support they've given to us. Special thanks to Amelia Herrera Robles and Stephen Box as well for always giving us inspiration. Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you to Richard Arlacon and Tony Cardenas for being a great part of our council and really helping with the beautification committee. We've cleaned up a lot of homeless encampments, a lot of streets and a lot of bulky items as well as the drains and I'd like to thank the council and Dunn for all they've done and especially the stakeholders because without the stakeholders we wouldn't have a council. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. And our next recipient is the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council. Silver Lake Neighborhood Council, Mr. Garcetti, Silver Lake. Received the Empowerment LA Award for their work on the Silver Lake Reservoir, a project that started when they heard that the beloved sycamore trees were tagged for removal. They investigated, discovered that DWP's plan to rip up the park for a large pipeline wasn't going to happen. They went into action, eventually moving the pipeline to the bottom of the reservoir and saving $20 million in construction costs. Silver Lake Neighborhood Council.
I really want to thank our two very supportive council members, Councilmember Garcetti and Councilmember Labange for all their support. But yes, the story is, we heard from our community, they saw that our beloved sycamore trees had red paint around them. They called us up, we sprang into action and we demanded from DWP, they kept saying, "No, no, no, this is the only plan, this is how it's going to work." And we didn't take that for an answer. We said, "No, there has to be a better way." And we worked and we worked and we saved the trees and $20 million. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll just add my thanks also to Councilman Garcetti and Councilman Labange for all their help and support and from their staff as well as our stakeholders. And I would also look at the council as a whole and ask you, when you're looking at budget for neighborhood councils, please be kind. We need the money, we use the money wisely and it helps us reach the community in every way possible. So please, please don't cut our budgets, okay?
I'd like to thank Councilman Tom Labange and Eric Garcetti. We're very proud of our Silver Lake Neighborhood Council, we're very proud of the Los Angeles Council and the $20 million that we save, we'd like to be sent to the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council and also all other, in all seriousness, we need money to continue the good advocacy we provide to those who live in our neighborhoods. So when you reconsider the budget, please strongly consider the neighborhood councils. We do the work that others can't do for themselves. So thank you.
Yes, once again, thanks to our two great council members and certainly we can use that savings to help repair the sidewalks over in Silver Lake. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you. And our final recipient is Park Mesa Highlights, Park Mesa Heights, highlight, what is a highlight? Community Council hosts an annual Unity Fest that draws thousands of people to a festival that is held in Van Ness Park, connecting people with health providers, departments that deliver civic services, organizations that represent the stakeholders and the history of the community, all as an expression of unity. Park Mesa Heights Community Council.
I would like to thank everyone, especially Councilman Parks for all the help he gave us in our Unity Fest. Our Unity Fest consists of all the libraries, the schools, the principals in the area and we really appreciate it. Our Unity Fest will be on the 31st. We have over 20 tents, everything is free, all the food, we don't lie to anyone to sell anything there. Thank you.
Hi, we also thank everyone for all that you've done for our community, especially to Councilman Parks for his office being so diligently working with everyone in our area and for providing services for cleanup and beautification and repairing the sidewalks. We have so much to be grateful for and just thank you for everything.
All right, now let's hear from the folks that helped put this together. Gracie, you're the general manager, hear from you.
In fact, Mr. Zine, I have members that are patiently waiting on the queue. I'd like to defer to them at this point if it's okay with you.
Then we'll come back to this, okay? That's fine.
Bill Rosendahl.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. President. Appreciate this moment. I just want to acknowledge the Mar Vista crowd, come on up to the podium again. And just this moment to be able to say, I know them all because a familiar face is a familiar face in a democracy when you're interacting and working. What has been the greatest joy for me in these eight years in this government is working with the community and for the community to realize I have no hidden agenda on anything. And when I went to my Farmer's Market, which I opened up within as quickly as I could when I got elected to this job, I quietly went every Sunday to get greens for my chickens and my turkeys and as time went on, people realized, "It's the councilmen," you know? And I'd be quietly doing stuff and before you know it, people would come up with issues. So when you're accessible and open and positive, people come and share things to you. You know, just the other day, there's that great lady sitting right there, Jean, and I gave her a kiss with the hat on, she comes by the house and she brings me food. All of them have been bringing food, getting me out of my cancer, getting me back to life. So I'm living and I'm going to live a long time more and I can thank neighborhood councils in this great city for the energy, positive spirit and hopefulness of loving our city and moving forward. So I'm as good to go. I'd like to get a photo if I could, standing there right now and put it in my Facebook.
Bill, you're off, off mic and screen.
Come on down Bill.
I'm going to get right in here with my lovely people, right in the middle if I could, put it right here and I'll get right there.
Bill on his hands, except for...
We are a community, we are a family and the more we show our love for one another, the more the democracy works. You got it? Everybody look at those cameras.
I'll get in here.
Whatever, paparazzi.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much.
I'd now like to call on Councilman Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you to the most incredible volunteer force that Los Angeles has, our neighborhood councils and thank you for the great work you did. Congratulations. I've worked with a number of neighborhood councils, not just Silver Lake, which makes me so proud and really has set the bar for so long, one of the very first neighborhood councils, remaining one of the most active. And I think you guys should have probably worked on commission because if you saved $20 million for the city, probably could have, just like 1% would have been fair maybe, $200,000 sprinkled around other neighborhood councils, we would have been set. But you guys have did an incredible job. Tom Labange and I sat down every single day with new pictures and new ideas in the Silver Lake Reservoir of how to get a very important public works project done, but you did in an extraordinary way that really resulted in the neighborhood being better off, environment being better off and our budget being better off. So thank you. Congratulations to all the neighborhood councils and you know, the first chapter of neighborhood councils has been a good one, but you're really opening the page to a second chapter that I think will be bigger and bolder, be full of more power and more empowerment. So I love your signs, keep calm and let's empower LA. Thanks.
Mr. Coretts.
Well, I want to recognize of course, all the neighborhood councils and all the great work that they've done and their friends scattered throughout some of the other neighborhood councils, particularly Rosalie Preston, who I've known actually for longer than I should admit in the Harbor Gateway area. Perhaps since before at least one council member was born in this council. I shouldn't have said that though. I particularly love Mar Vista, which I represent part of. First for the wonderful things you've done to encourage Bill Rosendahl and help him through his difficulties, but particularly because of the great environmental things that this neighborhood council has done, it has to be the greenest neighborhood council in the city and particularly their great work with plastic bag issues. And this is one of their permanent bags that you can not only use, but you can roll it up and put it in your pocket so it's totally convenient. They do all kinds of great environmental stuff. They're a great example to the rest of the neighborhood councils and the rest of the city and I thank you all for everything that you've done.
Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks.
All right, I'll fill in for Mr. Parks right now, I'll speak for Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to thank the, our neighborhood council with Ted Thomas and also Lady Gage for being here. There's so many things that they've helped the council district with from dealing with the Angeles Mesa Library renovation, to dealing with the Crenshaw Light Rail Line, to dealing with our attempt to get a grocery store on Crenshaw, to so many things from the signage on Crenshaw where they identified their communities, that they have put forth all of that effort to make the community better. The issues that also reflected is that in the era before them coming into office, we had quite a turmoil. In fact, many times that neighborhood council could not meet because it did not have a quorum. They've changed that dynamic over the last several years and their creation of the Unity Program at Van Ness Park that recently was renovated and brings a tremendous number of community people in as it relates to the exercise program and a number of things, the kinds of issues that Ted and his group have concentrated on. So we're just pleased to be supportive of them because they have been such a help of bringing together our community. And Gracie, again, thank you because of your leadership, Dunn is on a path of really being successful in our city. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, I just wanted to rise, it is a city of great neighborhoods and in great neighborhoods which are organized, great things happen. And I wanted to thank all their involvement, but I also want to thank our departments. Silver Lake has a cooperative effort with DWP who came forth, who saw there should be change and they made change in this project. So I want to congratulate everybody on that effort, including the Department of Water and Power and also thank our departments that go to meetings and listen. Sometimes they listen to you more than they listen to us, believe it or not. So thank you and congratulations to every neighborhood council and anyone who wants to make a difference in Los Angeles, get involved in your community, whether it's a neighborhood council, a Friends of the Library, a Police Athletic League or the youth centers at our recreation centers, make a difference, it's people make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And Mr. Zine, I'll just take a moment. I want to thank Mink, not only for all of the hard work they do and one of the most efficient neighborhood councils that I've ever had the pleasure to deal with, but I want to thank you guys for a personal reason. Mink taught me how to work with a neighborhood council. And I almost drove Alan crazy, but he didn't give up on me and I think we have a great working relationship. I want to thank you for that and let you know that I have learned a lot from you and that I appreciate you. With that said, Mr. Arlacon.
Councilmembers, I too stand to say thank you to the neighborhood council system. We tried this experiment and it's working. The fact of the matter is, we don't have the time to be able to insert ourselves into every single block of our communities that we serve because our districts are so large. I do support expanding the city council in terms of numbers so that we can get closer to our districts, but the neighborhood council system has been a bridge to communities and Dunn activities that we have not been able to do. I do think though that we just need to bite the bullet and double the budget for the neighborhood councils and I'm not saying that because, I'm not saying that because I need your vote, because I hope never to need any more votes in my life, but I'm saying that because I truly believe that if we are honest about our support for the neighborhood councils, our actions evidence that by how we spend our budget. So I'd be happy to work with you to do just that in this upcoming budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Arlacon. I'd just like to take a moment to thank all the neighborhood councils for their hard work. I want to echo my colleagues as volunteers, there's a lot of passion, there's a lot of energy, there's creative tension, but the fact is, we're all coming to the same place to making a better city. So for that, I thank all the neighborhood councils, especially those in District 1. To Councilman Zine for close, no one else on the queue.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to bring forth the folks from Department of Neighborhood Empowerment to have a couple comments. First, our general manager, Gracie Lu, come on forward and then we'll hear from the other representatives.
Good morning, thank you so much. I'm really privileged to serve the city of Los Angeles and our neighborhood council system and I'm really thrilled that Councilmember Zine recognized and their work today and I really want to thank not only all the city council members for their hard work in terms of collaborating with their neighborhood councils, I want to thank the city departments that are working with them too because really to provide that access and the influence is indeed their mission of the neighborhood councils. So I particularly want to thank Councilmember Parks and again, Councilmember Zine for their work with the neighborhood councils in the Education Neighbors Committee and really acknowledge the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners for creating the Empowerment LA Awards so that we could start acknowledging the great work neighborhood councils do throughout the city. So I would like definitely for the commissioners to speak on their awards and want to thank, acknowledge and thank the mayor's office, Tori Osborne, Yolanda Fuentes and of course the mayor for working with the neighborhood councils all these years. Thank you very much.
And I will say that Gracie's leadership at the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment has really been a guiding light to not only the neighborhood councils, but to the city council. You've really taken and moved forward in a very positive fashion, so I want to commend you for all the fine work you did. Len Schaefer is the man who started this idea, Len Schaefer from the great Tarzana community, Tarzana community, Len Schaefer, Commissioner.
Councilmembers, good morning. Councilmember Zine, thank you very much for taking on this effort, somebody I've known since, he wasn't even a sergeant when I first met him and that's going to tell you how long ago that was. I just want to say that this is not the end, it's just the beginning. Commissioner Mack will be up here in a minute to tell you that we're going to do this again next year and we hope to be back here to honor the members of the neighborhood councils who get the seven awards. who get the seven awards this year, just like we're doing now, because it lets them know that their efforts are worthwhile and that they're appreciated. Thank you again for having us here.
Good morning, council. I and my colleagues pat ourselves on the back every time we see each other because we're so, we feel like we have the best commission job in the city. We get to go around to neighborhoods and be inspired by these neighborhood councils and all the neighborhood councils doing great work around Los Angeles. And in creating the awards, we really wanted to have the rest of the city recognize and celebrate the neighborhood councils and the inspiration that we feel by what we see on an ongoing basis. And so, this represents the first annual award, and we see this as continuing. So, we're looking forward to your support in the next cycle of awards, which will start right now. And so, we're going to be recruiting nominations for neighborhood councils, and so, we look forward to working with you to celebrate more neighborhood councils and to really promote citizen participation as one of the key things that continues to make Los Angeles the great city that it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Couple more.
Commissioner Epperhart from San Pedro. 14 years ago, when the current charter was adopted by the voters, it opened the door to the biggest participation by volunteers in the history of this city, maybe any city. There are now about 1,700 neighborhood council board members, all of whom are to some extent or another true community activists. And what you've seen here today are just seven stories about what neighborhood councils have accomplished in this city, and in the coming years, you are going to hear a lot more. I just want to say, what I always say about neighborhood councils, the best thing about them are the people who participate. So, let's give them one more round of applause.
Mr. Zine?
Two more, Mr. President.
Good morning, Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Yolanda Fuentes Miranda. On behalf of the mayor and our deputy mayor, Tori Osborne, we would just like to congratulate these amazing neighborhood council leaders who are true angels in Los Angeles, working and caring for our community. Councilmen Zine and Councilwoman Parks, thank you so much for taking the time of council, honoring these great neighborhood councils, and of course, to Gracie, thank you for your leadership and your vision for our department. Thank you.
Tori Osborne.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zine. This is an extraordinary experiment in democracy. What we see today is the creativity, the resiliency. Dunn's budget was cut by 60% because of the crisis the city was going through. Despite that, the neighborhood councils are flourishing, are growing, and the next chapter, as Councilwoman Garcetti said, begins now, and we expect nothing but greatness. On behalf of Mayor Vierigosa, who has invested, believes in the neighborhood councils, believes bringing government closer to the people, believes in you and your leadership, I want to thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to close by saying, we have 95 neighborhood councils. You've seen a small sampling of the neighborhood councils represented, the fine people of the city of Los Angeles. We appreciate your involvement, appreciate the commission, appreciate L.A. Come together, neighborhood councils is the way to the future. Thank you very much. And again, let's acknowledge the recipients of this year's neighborhood council awards. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Zine.
We'll go back to photos.
I think you broke the record there, Councilmember, Councilor Labange.
That was a small hand. I want a better hand there, Terry. Good job, Terry. All right. I want a big hand for this person, Michaela Pereira. Give her a big hand right now. Come on. This is a very special person who was born in Canada the year I graduated from high school, so now I'm always going to remember you that way, in Saskatchewan.
Saskatchewan.
Saskatchewan, and Canada's a great country, and so many great people have come from Canada to the United States and have made a difference in their professions, many people in your profession. Michaela has been promoted, if I could say, because we love KTLA.
Yes, we do.
But it's at Sunset and Vine, right? Sunset at Van Ness, but she's going to New York City. So, they not only got the Tonight Show out of L.A., they got Michaela, which is a little bit of a challenge, but we want to salute you, Michaela, for all that you have done as a member of the broadcast team. She started her first job, Joe, out in Victoria, at a station doing mountain weather reports and a little bit of skiing, all Canadian ski, as we know there. Through the years, she has worked diligently, and in 2004, she came here to Los Angeles and made a difference right away. Right away, people knew that they loved you. I loved you, okay? Right away, there was that big scream. And the thing about television in Los Angeles that has evolved right now, it's mostly a morning show, truly. No one gets home to see the big news anymore because the big news happens all day long, and KTLA there is all the time. I got to tell you a quick little story, Michaela. I was selling the Herald Examiner, which was an old paper, I was selling on Hyperion Avenue at Scotland, and in 1964, Joe, all the police cars from Hollywood Division were coming up, Hyperion, and all the police cars from Central were coming up, Grisbon Park Boulevard. There was no Rampart then. It's only when I saw the telemobile with Stan Chambers that I get my newspaper corner to Annie Fitzpatrick, and I ran a mile and a half to Surrey Street where there was this famous shootout, and it's where Daryl Gates, who was a commander then, envisioned SWAT. KTLA everywhere, all the time. The legacy of KTLA, you're what a special place, but now going to CNN around the world, which makes it so important, is many people in CNN are East Coast cited. Now, being a great Canadian-American, American-Canadian, a great Angelino, you could help tell the story of Los Angeles and California in such a way that will better improve our image in the world, good or bad, but our image in the world. But so many things that you've done over the years, we certainly want to salute you. She was a co-host with Bob Eubanks on the Tournament of Roses, which is so special, which is one of the greatest events that we have here, and we're so supportive that Los Angeles has the longest running float in the parade, supported by the Tourism Board of Los Angeles, previously by the DWP. But we thank everyone who supported that parade because that's where we celebrate, you know, and you get up in Saskatchewan, or Vancouver, or Millsford, and you'll watch that parade wherever you are in the world. She's also been the chairwoman of the Board of L.A.'s Best Friends, which is L.A.'s Best, which you just honored recently, working with a variety of boys and girls clubs throughout Southern California, numerous honors at broadcasting, but more the community honors, because people love you in the community. When Michaela comes someplace, it makes a big difference. It ups that this is important, that you're there. So, I wanted to salute you before you got your flight to New York City. I want to salute you to know I'm going to be watching CNN Morning Show because I get up early, and they've changed the name so many times. All they got to say is Michaela in the morning, and they'll get ratings. Okay, so I got to tell our friends over at CNN. But on behalf of Mayor Antonio Vierigosa and all the city council, I have this commendation for you, Michaela, to salute you for your years of service in Los Angeles, and especially because you are so, this is all these beautiful sunflowers, for all the work that you've done, because you brighten everybody's day. Let's give a big hand for Michaela and all her special work. Thank you, lady.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to talk more about you.
Thank you so much.
Say a few words.
Thank you. Councilman Labange, to all of the council and the council president, I have to say a gigantic thank you for this incredible honor, and an incredible honor of serving the fantastic, amazing, diverse, international, wonderful community of Los Angeles, the greater area. All of you I've had and chances to encounter during events and luncheons and parades around the Southland, and you've all welcomed me warmly some nine years ago. The reason I do what I do in the community is because of two people that are seated off camera, don't want to be on camera, my mother, Ainsley, and my father, Doug, who happened to be in town. They planted in me a spirit of community service, something that I hope to take with me as I travel to New York City. It is a big adventure that awaits me, but please know that my heart will be in California, and I will do my best to honor the nine years that I spent serving this terrific community. Thank you for this amazing honor.
If I may, you have.
Oh, I have to introduce the other people, too. Hold on.
Okay.
Our chauffeur today, Sandy Stanton, who is one of my dearest friends of a long time, Sandy Stanton, my executive producer, Carrie Brace, who makes our program, the terrific newscast that is every day, the number one morning show in Los Angeles, and Jason Ball, our news director, who gave me wings. He really did.
You have many, you have many speakers on the queue. So, I'd like to call Councilmember Perry, then Councilmember Zine, Councilor Buscaino. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Michaela, I just wanted to tell you how much I've enjoyed watching you over the years, but more than that, helping the homeless and meeting your parents and working with you on glamour grounds, and our loss as New York's gain, but the best part is, is we can still see you on the national network and watch what you do and still be a part of your life, and I hope you'll still be a part of ours. And I intend to stay in touch with you no matter where you go.
All right.
So, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Garcetti.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Michaela, I can't believe you're leaving Los Angeles because you are Los Angeles. Like many Angelinos, we wake up together every morning, which is, you know, something that, as a married man, I'm still happy to say, that you are the person that I wake up with every single morning. I turn on Channel 5, and I see you. Tom does too, and I needed to say countless Angelinos do, because you are the face of the new day for us. And whether it was the Hollywood Christmas Parade, which you were a huge part of making sure we kept going, whether it's, you know, telling us good news or bad news, you do it with humor, you do it with intelligence, you do it with wit, and we're going to miss you. So, take a little bit of L.A. with you, teach New York a thing or two about how a real city acts.
That's right.
And then come back here after you do your time in the Big Apple, because we'd love to welcome you back with open arms, but we love you. Thank you.
Councilman Garcetti.
Councilman Rosendahl.
L.A., New York, New York, L.A., back and forth we go. First of all, I want to thank KTLA for putting you on in the morning.
Thank you.
And like Tom, I wake up with you in the morning to learn what's going on in the world. KTLA's been an incredible source of information over the years. Now, CNN, the whole world's going to see you, so welcome to the whole world. Thank you for all what you did in Los Angeles, and bless you for your public service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilor Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michaela, we're truly going to miss you. I thoroughly enjoyed watching every morning, KTLA Morning News, and we are going to truly miss you. But my, you know, my colleagues say they watch you, but my favorite, my favorite clip or live show was when the bet was made between the Kings and Vancouver, and the bet was made, you know, if Roger Lodge loses a bet, he'd have to wear his red Speedos.
Yeah.
And it's on YouTube. It's great to watch the clip of your reaction when he came on the air with his red chonies on. And if you can give us that scream one more time.
I don't think I ever can.
We're going to miss you. We love you, and really thank you for starting our day off with a smile. We're truly going to miss you, Michaela, and we wish you the best of luck. God bless you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman.
Councilman Parks.
Thanks for playing me with that image.
Thank you very much. Michaela, congratulations on moving to a bigger and better job, but we'll always miss you and the things you've done in the city, which is kind of a hallmark of those anchors who come here that think their job is just reading the news, but you've gotten off the desk, you've gone into the MLK Parade, you've been at every event that we can think of, and you didn't have to be the emcee, you just came to the event. And so, you brought yourself to the community. Community appreciates that, and the great thing is, we'll get to still see you on television, and we just ask that you not forget your home, okay? And so, we appreciate what you've done. You've broken down so many barriers in that industry, and we just ask you to continue doing that because you're a role model to so many people that are interested in that industry. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Zine.
Councilman Zine is in the back room right now.
All right.
I'll speak to what he would say. Great job, Michaela.
All right. Congratulations, and good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Give Michaela a big hand again. Very good.
I believe that does conclude our presentations. Would that be accurate, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number six, called Special for Cards.
Okay, item six. We have John Walsh on item six. Please come forward.
See for you out there, they've cleared these seats from now on, because they don't want people sitting there, so you can't see them. There was about 200 of us in the back, but we can't sit here. Too many minorities.
Sir, please focus on the item in front of you.
Okay, you're not too bad. This is item six, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is from the CLA, requires local government to approve telecommunications facilities within 45 days of receipt. We're certainly in favor of this, and we're happy to see that Garcetti showed up, although he has a campaign appointment at 11:30. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Last time I was here, 5,000 hits.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. President, that brings us to item seven, called Special for Cards.
Okay, we have John Walsh again and Arnold Sachs. Item number seven.
John Walsh blogging at, or you can go to JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com, or you can go straight through HollywoodHighlands.org. I just put something up, Rock the City, last night. Number seven, this concerns redevelopment. This concerns their attempt to bring back redevelopment. Now, let me tell you, redevelopment is a heartbeat away from disappearing. I get down on my knees, and I'm an atheist, but I just pray to God, in case God exists, to make sure that Jerry Brown lives for at least another six years until his second term, because the second, that Jerry Brown is not the governor of this state, this state is bringing back CRA, and huge amounts of money will be skimmed off. Property tax. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Sachs.
Number six, fourth.
Good morning, and thank you for being there, Mr. West, and it's a pleasure to address a professional instead of the crook that normally put up there. Redevelopment Act. It's amazing sometimes what you find out when you go to different committees and different In January, the county put forth a Clean Water, Clean Beaches Act, and Supervisor Antonovich made a motion regarding funding for that, and he mentioned in the motion that the county of Los Angeles received back $750 million from redevelopment funds from the state this past year. So, you wonder, do a little figuring, broad figuring, say five years, it's $600 million a year, that's $3 billion in redevelopment funds this county would have received back. Now, do some quick math and find out if you can figure out if there was half a billion dollars' worth of low-income housing.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, where are we now, Mr. City Attorney? I mean, Mr. City Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to item eight, called Special for Cards.
You know, our city attorney is new, so I just wanted to see if he was on his toes. I called his name, and he was over there shivering. Mr. Clerk, okay, item eight, Arnold Sachs and Mr. John Walsh. Please come forward.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sachs. Right off the bat, you can see a problem with this bill in state legislation. with this bill in state legislation. Veterans housing and homeless prevention, they're really two different trains. Homeless prevention could include people who are in foreclosure, people who've lost their jobs. What's the state doing for manufacturing? What's the state doing? How is the foreclosure fiasco moving along? Veterans housing is entirely different. May not deal with somebody being foreclosed, it may also deal with that. But more veterans are homeless because maybe they suffer from a post-traumatic stress disorder or any of the other ailments that they've managed to pick up while defending the country. What would really be nice as far as this legislation in regarding veterans is if they looked at the property in Westwood and said, you know what? That property was set aside for veterans, for homeless, for homes for them to live in. When you include that, maybe you'll have something. But somehow the moneyed interests in the city of Los Angeles always manage to blight any action to put that property to use. So who are you gonna vote for? You're gonna vote to defend the veterans for a change? Or you're gonna devote to defend the people that contribute to your election campaigns so you don't have to address the problems the veterans receive? And again, how are you addressing the Prevention Act, the homeless Prevention Act part of this bill? It's two different trains. And you know what? When two different trains go in two different directions, you actually go nowhere.
Mr. Walsh? John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. And then you can just icon right over there and see it become J. Walsh Confidential. And there's a new post up today about, about the poll which shows Wendy Gruel winning. Incidentally, so for veterans, well, my father was a veteran. And my father died in a veteran hospital, which he got good treatment at that hospital and in another state. So the veterans, we have Mr. Rosebrook, who does an excellent job here. And we're gonna build a gigantic subway just at the veterans hospital. But let me finish by saying Garcetti has left. He has an 11:30 a.m. appointment-- Stay on the subject. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, our next item is item 10. And Mr. Walsh, you have a card on 10 as well. Mr. Walsh, item 10. John Walsh, you know where I blog. 4,000 the other day. This is, again, this is item 10. Zine, who vote for Zine, see, they don't stop me when I say that. Authorize the general manager, CDD, to execute a contract family crisis. Current contract, 24 months. We're all in favor of this. And if you, I'm telling you, stay tuned to public comment where they can't filibuster me, or it's difficult. Okay. Let's stay on the item. Okay, uh, no members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next, item 13, Arnold Sachs and John Walsh. Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you again, sir. This refers to a reduction of notice from 24 days to 10 days for public input. And it's somewhat fascinating. You have another item on your agenda. You're against Assembly Bill 162, which would impose a time limit because it undermines local land use control and ultimately the principle of home rule. Well, by imposing a reduction of 24 to 10 days, isn't that exactly what you're doing in this item? You're imposing a reduction of local land use control and the principle of home rule. But you'll vote for this and you'll vote against the other one. It absolutely makes no sense. That's why counsel leads from behind.
Mr. Walsh. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. The important thing is here, not that it's been reduced by 14, it's where this, this concerns a development deal at Forest Lawn Memorial Park. What, this is, they're gonna turn Forest Lawn Memorial Park into a circus. You know, Bela Lugosi lived for a while in the valley. You know, well, let's talk about-- and if Bela Lugosi were here today, he would say, I am against. What are you doing here? Forest Lawn Memorial Park, Bella, Bella, I'm a good Hungarian, I'm against this. And if Boris Karloff were here and said, what are you doing to us? This is insane. We need our time, the dead, to protest. Well, development at our cemetery. That's pretty good, Mr. Walsh. I remember Bela Lugosi and Boris Karloff. Okay, let's vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now we have item 14 called Special by Mr. Sachs. Item, item four-- Been informed, Arnold, you have one minute.
Thank you. Thank you again, sir. Yes, thank you again. This, again, I addressed the Quimby fees that are allocated from this project. You know, in February 18th of 2013, the Downtown News made a little story about the Quimby Funds Fiasco in the fall of 2007. They eliminated the special zoning rule. Of the 120 million that the city has collected of Quimby fees, nearly 77.5 million remained unallocated. What happens to the Quimby fees? We have a park over here, the Grand Central Park. You can't get the park at the police station, the new police headquarters, to be kept up. But you used Quimby fees to build the Grand Central Park. How come they bordered it? How would three miles from within this city not cover some of the park areas? And since the city council has moved into making these small parquettes, why isn't Quimby fees being used for that idea also?
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Mr. Reyes.
President, can I move forthwith on item number 11?
Forthwith?
Thank you, sir.
Item 11. Okay, let's vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, I believe that brings us to general public comment.
That is correct, sir.
If I could ask Mr. Sachs to return, Mr. Walsh to return, and Dan Jones to, please come forward. Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you again. Couple things. Fascinating meeting this morning in public safety regarding the disposition of fire personnel. And it's, what's fascinating, actually, is you go and you hear and you listen and they say that the fire chief has a responsibility for his, at his disposal, to determine how he's gonna allocate his resources. But the council has at their disposal the budgeting for the departments. But what wasn't discussed was the council's budget hearings every year. And you can look in the newspapers and you can see that every year they've managed to eliminate funded unfilled positions. Now the fire people were claiming that they're gonna be at a disadvantage because people will be taken off of, out of patrol or put into new places and it'll weaken their response because they won't have enough personnel. But the city, every year, eliminates unfunded, I mean funded unfilled positions. So how can the city afford to pay for ghosts when the fire department and its personnel claim they don't have enough personnel? Solution: put a ghost on an engine. Then you have an unfunded, I mean a funded filled position to accompany the people that are actually there. But what's really amazing is the unions and their personnel don't address this problem. And if you go back five, six, seven years, every year, the city has limited its personnel by eliminating funded unfilled positions. Who's gonna address that?
Thank you, Mr. Sachs, Mr. Walsh, followed by Dan Jones, followed by Brian Barajas. Okay, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Yesterday at this time of day, Garcetti had a 10-point lead in the L.A. Times poll. The L.A. Times poll was a lie. Then the one that was paid by ABC, which is impartial, which is not endorsing Eric Garcetti, came out yesterday and Wendy Gruel now has a three-point lead. Why? Because her commercials were very good. Why? Because Wendy Gruel is one of the leaders in fighting the Koch Brothers. Remember, the Koch Brothers have now unofficially taken over the L.A. Times. If you are with the Koch Brothers, if you are not to the left of Kevin James, if you do not want to get in bed with the right-wingers, then you will forsake Eric Garcetti and you will vote for Wendy Gruel. I challenge Eric Garcetti to get up anyplace and say, Koch Brothers, get out of town. He is 100%. He has made a deal. Kevin James is the go-between. Every right-wing group in this city is supporting who? That's right, Garcetti. And he is going down to defeat. His commercials are terrible. He's still wearing that ugly black sweater of his. His commercials and the Koch Brothers, as you know, are the most evil people on the world. Now, I guess you don't know which one of them is gay, so I won't tell you. But it's in the, it's in the New York Times which is, which one of them is gay. Now that's fine, but in privately, but personally, he's a homophobe. Number one, the L.A. Times is run by the Koch Brothers now and there's not one of you liberals up here who will denounce the Koch Brothers. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Jones, followed by Mr. Barajas.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Jones. I'm curious as to why the downtown D-Link wasn't represented this morning. I'm probably sure they didn't get an award for cleaning up streets, putting in new infrastructure, sidewalks, building up the community infrastructure, you know, personal businesses. I just found out that it's here. Hell, that these neighborhood councils have been in existence for 12 years. Why is the downtown D-Link brand spanking new? Well, they didn't want those people that were down there before the D-Link was created to be representative. They don't even know they have a stake in the stakeholder position down there. Now, I recognize things have been moving in the right direction behind the boards. The nomination for the Affordable Housing Law has been rescinded, the Get the Work, Back to, Get the Kids Back to Work Program Trust Fund. I see those things and I recognize that. And that's, that's a good thing. But today, I'm gonna explain the subprime mortgage law's residual effects, which is where the 1% is gonna make their money. They created the bubble. They knew it was gonna burst. This is where the payoff is. Because for the last five graduating classes from high school kids to college kids, they're now stacked up on top of the millions of people that are out of work. Europe has the same underemployed, undereducated, underappreciated population that is living in Third World squaller. How is anybody gonna ever get up from underneath the stacked employment? Let me put it this way. Before the subprime mortgage law, there was 10 jobs with one applicant. The residual effect for every employer in this country is to have one job with 1,000 applicants. The pay scale for everybody in this country will always perpetually be that way, underappreciated, underemployed, because of education and everything else that the city can't pay for, which is another residual effect. I'll be back to explain that later. Mr. Piscani, you still selling toy guns in your district? Good for you.
Mr. Barajas.
I'm gonna prove to you that God exists. Freu, freu wie seine Sonne seine Sonnen fliegen, freu wie seine Sonne fliegen. Das ist himmles, preschen brand. Laufe, Bruder, reire Bahn, laufe, Bruder, reire Bahn. Freu dich wie ein Held zum Segen, wie ein Held zum Segen. Laufe, Bruder, reire Bahn, Bahn, wie ein Held zum Segen. Freu dich, freu dich wie ein Held, ein Held zum Segen.
Members, that was a first. Okay, any other business before this council? Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Let's, they're posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements? Could everyone in the council chambers please rise? Everyone, please rise. Please rise. Richard, real quick, you missed the call for announcements. Go on.
I was waiting for the people to rise.
Well, they're up.
Okay, thank you, thank you. It's my pleasure to, as you know, we're bringing the Discovery Science Center to Los Angeles in 2014. It's my pleasure to extend the announcement from the Institute of Museum and Library Services that the Discovery Science Center is going to receive the 2013 National Medal of, National Medal for Museum and Library Service. This is a national honor. I believe it will involve the First Lady, Michelle Obama in the presentation. And, and so we are so proud that now our neighbor and soon to be part of the city of Los Angeles's plethora of services, the Discovery Science Center will receive this tremendous honor.
Thank you. Now adjourning motions. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd like to request that we adjourn in memory of Carlos Dontero Monroe, who was born May 1942, passed away February 18, 2013. He's best known as Don. He was a wonderful person, born in Los Angeles to Carlos Enrique and Marjorie Lenore Monroe. He was a second of five siblings. He received a Catholic education from Holy Name and St. Paul Elementary Schools. He eventually graduated from St. John Vianney and went on to attend Los Angeles City College in Cal State LA. While he was a great swimmer as a, at a young age, he also excelled in basketball during his high school years. He developed a very strong work ethic from his father and worked as a paperboy, continued working during his early college for Fedco Incorporated. Eventually, he and his father, along with Mac Fallings, established CMN Metals Incorporated, a scrap metal company. Throughout his life, he continued to be very active in the family business and would show up every now and then to let people know he was still in charge. Under the direction of his wife Gloria and their two sons, Don Carlos and Todd, CMN Metals is still thriving. He had many projects and interests. He was active in the L.A. Association of the 10th Cavalry, which was an African-American group that reenacted the original Black Buffalo Soldier Regiment that served the United States Army during the Indian War. States Army during the Indian War. In the '70s, he joined his then-father-in-law, a Los Angeles fire chief, in establishing workshops to help prepare young minorities seeking employment in the fire department. He assisted in development of a Chinese restaurant, which was one of the first black-owned restaurants in the Los Angeles Chinatown area in the 1980s. During his later years, he became a strong advocate of healthy living. He took an active role in sharing his homopathic remedies and his low-fat, no-fry, no-bleach, no-sugar eating habits. Whether you wanted this information or not, Don was willing to tell you anyway. Although Don was a believer in hard work, some may have called him a workaholic, there was one thing he clearly stood out as his most important thing in his life was his family. Don absolutely adored his family, his each sibling, nephew, niece, son, daughter, grandchild, knew they were special. He made a point to be present in their lives. He took the time to be involved in school, sports, traveled with them, and even served as a father figure to their children's friends and who did not have one. He's a positive role model to his family and will be missed dearly. He's survived by his wife Gloria, his eight daughters, four sons, and 30 grandchildren and a host of other family members. Funeral services were held March 2nd, 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Okay, members, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Leo Branton Jr. He was 91 years old. He was my friend. He was my neighbor and he was a pistol. He broke down so, so many barriers. I'll just read just a couple. He was the first lawyer to successfully challenge that it was unconstitutional to deny African-Americans the ability to serve on jury duty. The first African-American lawyer to form an interracial law firm. And there's, you know, first African-American attorney to represent Nat King Cole, Dorothy Dandridge, Inga Stevens, Richard Pryor, Miles Davis, as well as the Jimi Hendrix estate. He turned 90 last year and had a party and I was invited. And so I go to the party thinking it's going to be some big gala and it was just a small gathering of close friends and family member. He did a lot for a lot of us and he will be missed. But he was smart as a whip. The first attorney to file numerous cases against the LAPD for misconduct against African-Americans. He's survived by his son Chip, who's a friend of mine, Leo Chip Branton. I always would joke with Leo because he'd always say, how's your lovely wife or what have you? If it weren't for his son Chip, I may have never met my wife because Chip stole my girlfriend. And so, it changed my whole life. I've been married 32 years. Many of you know Tony Nicholas, that's his son as well, Paul Nicholas, his brother Sterling Branton, his sister Julia Branton Jones, and five grandchildren. May he rest in peace. This meeting is adjourned.